Session for February 21st, 2023. Our first item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Brian Reinen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Our moment of silence tonight is going to be in honor of the Smyrna High School family. Okay, so, Board members, anything on the consent agenda? Any questions on this consent agenda?
There's one thing I would like to point out on the consent agenda is number three under routine bids is bid 3640 Lawn Care Services. That is not a battle I'm going down this year. And so, we have increased the couple of things. One, we have split the county into four zones. It was in four zones last year, but one person was able to bid on multiple zones. And so, that's how we kind of got behind with some of our contracting services. No contractor is able to do more than one zone, so that should help us on that capacity. And then, we've also added additional cuts during the summer months. So, it's a bigger amount, but after last year, we need to increase that. Try, anything you wanted to add to that? We said that wasn't something we're going to deal with again.
The only thing that we also did is we cut bush hogging out separately. So, we actually have five contracts. This available, four for regular yard maintenance and one for bush hogging.
Can I ask the transformational leader administrator, is that something we've done before or is that a new thing?
Let me check to see that one as well. Try, we'll see. Let me find the details on that bid for Thursday night.
Okay, and do we know, is it for principals?
Yes, it would be for that amount. Yep.
Live captioning services?
Yeah, we do that right now at Central Magnet for any of our classes that we may need to combine with somewhere else that allows us to have that ability.
That's nice. Very nice.
I'd say that's probably something that's going to grow as we move into more teacher areas where I have to. And you'll see just on some of these routine bids as well, the number of people that we mail to vendors and the lack of responses that we're getting. That is a continuous trend that we send out to vendors that we're aware of and then we don't get responses from everybody.
Dean, I guess we can move on to Dean if there are no more questions.
So, we have visitors that I guess will be Thursday. Spotlight Jenna Stitzel is doing Thursday. Rutherford Proud, our recognition series we started last time, we have two, that'll be Thursday. But tonight, we have the Travis Mannion Foundation, TMF, and they're here to present on character education programs. Joe is here with us. We, so I'll tell you how this came about. So, the Travis Mannion Foundation, I mean, he'll give you some of the background as well, and Joe, you can go ahead and start setting up while I kind of introduce you, is the city schools partners with the Travis Mannion Foundation to work on character education type themes. Where the character education programs follow, they follow the Values and Action Institute. So, they're 22 through VIA is what they call themselves, the Values and Action. I'm connected with it because I actually teach the Values and Action at Lipscomb. And so, it is something that we use those 22 character traits to just kind of define outside of anything that you need for students, these are traits that are going to help everyone. And so, there are different avenues you can look at as far as how do you implement this? They have kind of taken the place in some way, and he will talk about this as well, as what we used to have with Dare. And so, that's kind of what this avenue goes through. I'm not quite sure yet where it will go in Rutherford County, but since it is curriculum-based, I wanted to present it to the board first and have Joe talk about it before the board to see if this was something that we are interested in entertaining before we move further. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that too bad.
Thanks for having me.
Yep, so it's all you.
Is this on?
Yeah, this is on.
So, yeah, thank you for having me. Thank you for that introduction. My name is Joe Greco. I'm with the Travis Mannion Foundation, local to the area. I live in Las Cassas, but I'm new to the area in that I just moved here a few months ago from New Jersey for the Travis Mannion Foundation. So, before I get into TMF and character does matter, let me fix that. Let me fix this. Before I do that, I want to thank everybody for being welcoming to me and to the community. It's a big, there's a lot of pressure on middle Tennessee moving in because everyone's telling me how great it was, and it's been kind of fulfilled. So, thank you guys as being a part of the community for welcoming me and my family. I have a son who's in Las Cassas Elementary School. He is seven and loving life there. So, everything's going well. As part of my job with the Travis Mannion Foundation, I am the Southeast Region Coordinator, hence why I moved down here. Let me backtrack here. Has this got? All right. So, who is the Travis Mannion Foundation? Is everyone here familiar with the Travis Mannion Foundation? Is any, nobody? These two guys are. Is anyone familiar with the 9/11 Heroes Run that takes place in downtown Murfreesboro? Right, so sitting behind me is the 9/11 Heroes Run Race Director, who I'm going to introduce in a little bit, but that's the Travis Mannion Foundation. That's the foundation behind that. And who we are, we are a veteran service organization that was started in 2007 by Travis Mannion's mother, right? Travis Mannion is a First Lieutenant Marine who was killed in action in Iraq in 2007. And he was one of those guys that lived by those values that we all kind of strive to live by. Character, essentially, right? Leadership, right? That kind of person. And the story goes is before he lost his life in Iraq, his brother-in-law tried to kind of urge him not to go, had a bad feeling, right? As we can probably sympathize and understand. His brother happened to be right. But before he went, his brother says, brother-in-law said, "What happens if I trip you down these steps in the Vet in Philadelphia Eagle Stadium and you break your leg? You can't go." And he said, "That's true, but if I don't go, who's going to go, right? I've been training for this. I'm ready. I have the experience." So, if not me, then who? Ask forward to what happens, and if not me, then who? That ethos became the foundation for the Travis Mannion Foundation. Travis's mother Janet Mannion started it initially as just a nonprofit fundraising effort, and it blew up, right? And now, it's still going 16 years later. She has since passed. Travis's sister Ryan Mannion is now the CEO and the president. And we are a veteran service organization that empowers veteran families, veterans, families of the fallen, and inspired civilians to pass on those values to the next generation, hence why I'm here, right? The Rutherford County School District. We aim to unite these communities by training, developing, and highlighting the role models that lead them. And those that lead them are our Spartans. Essentially, Spartans is what we would call our mentors, our volunteers, and those that work on behalf of the foundation, right? Who is the Travis Mannion Foundation? A little more into it. I can go into all those numbers. I can read them, but you can see them for yourself. The most important thing I want you to see from that is the impact that's been made, right? And the impact that can be continued to be made and increased in a district like this. 200,000 Spartans nationwide, 75,000-plus veterans and families of the fallen have been empowered, 465,000 youth have been impacted by If Not Me Then Who, and 2,300-plus veteran mentors that deliver that Character Does Matter program across the nation. So, I think it's pretty obvious why I'm here, but let's answer that question. Why are we here? This is why. More than one in three young people, 16 million young adults, have never had a positive role model or a mentor, right? That's a staggering number, right? I did not have one when I grew up. I wish I had one, and I'm sure there's people here that can relate to that as well. 50,000 students, that number might look familiar to this room, right? Based on 2019, 2020, I think it was 47,000 and change. I'm not sure what it is right now, but that's a lot of impact that can be made, right? With our youth. What is Character Does Matter? The program develops character and leadership skills in young adults, and it's grounded in evidence-based field of positive psychology. So, if you saw the handouts that you received, there is a list of 24 character traits. That comes from that positive psychology, right? And that's the foundation to the Character Does Matter program. I think if you look through that list, you'll see, or I challenge anyone here to go through that list and say, "That's not important. Our children don't need that. That's overrated," right? I challenge anyone here to say that when looking at that list. So, the good thing about that list and the good thing about, the great thing about the CDM program is that it's all-inclusive. There is no demographic and no culture that cannot benefit from having good character. I think we can probably all agree on that, right? Some traits might take precedence over others when you're talking about certain demographics. That's the beauty of the program as well. It's modifiable to whoever it is we're presenting to, right? If that makes sense, right? So, we use a strength-based approach to develop character traits in the next generation through a combination of informal discussion and activity-based learning. So, before I, I want to play a video, and there's the video. This is a two-minute video. It's not, not long, but I think it gives you a good idea. This was a video showing students living that If Not Me Then Who in their, in their classroom.
The five words that my brother spoke before his last deployment to Iraq, If Not Me Then Who, are now an ethos that thousands of people across the country live by. We can all use it as motivation to step up in our families, our schools, and our communities. Here are a few ways you can answer that call in your own life and show others what it means to lead with character. If you don't step up...
Are you guys unable to hear that?
It's very low.
Then who else will?
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by helping some of my classmates out with homework that's challenging for them.
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by helping one of my friends out struggling through a workout.
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by helping my parents cook meals for my family.
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by inviting new students to sit with me at lunch.
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by helping my dad at the shop when he's busy.
I put If Not Me Then Who into action by making sure my friends with disabilities know they're no different from me.
Today, I encourage you to adopt that ethos in your own life. Use it as motivation to lead with character. If you don't step up, who will?
Sorry about the volume in the beginning there, but I think what's important to understand and appreciate is this type of curriculum, this character, and if you, if you look at the traits, it's foundational, right? It's not reactionary. And so, the sooner you get these type of traits into, in this case, a school district at a younger age in elementary schools, as an example, the less chance you have to worry as they move along through the school system, as they grow up. You're not reacting to a problem. You're not trying to change something. You're just building character at the ground, ground level and watching it grow, right? And when you have continuation, elementary, middle school, high school, right? It's going to be rooted in all the, in all these students and all these kids. We have this now, right, in the Murfreesboro City School District, right? And we've seen a huge impact, right, with those kids. I'm not going to speak for that. What I am going to do is introduce someone here who can speak to the transition that took place in 2019 from the Dare program into the Murfreesboro City School program and the impact that he saw and we now still continue to see, and that's Larry Maples.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys having us here. I was a 12-year vet in the United States Marine Corps, toured Fallujah, Iraq in '04, '05, and my family moved here to middle Tennessee. Both of my kids are Rutherford County students at Oakland. 2019, I transitioned out of violent crime work with the, through most of my career to being a school resource officer. In that timeframe, I think we identified that we were having, we being the, the school board and the police department, realizing that we may not be impacting our kids as much as we would like through the National Drug Awareness Program that we were a part of. That put us on the track to try to identify something that, that could substitute that program that would be more impactful, that would put us in every classroom as opposed to just hitting our fourth or fifth graders through that National Drug Awareness Program or the GREAT program. We, the two that somewhat made the finalist list was the one I actually researched was the Amazing Shake, the Great Shake, I forget what it's called now, and the Character Does Matter program that Sergeant Scott Newberg, who was the head of the SRO Division at the time at the Murfreesboro City Schools and the Police Department. Through hearing his presentation and my presentation, I was convinced that the Character Does Matter program was a much better fit. And when we presented that to the superintendent at the time, we knew that, that it impacted her. She agreed to start this transition process, but we didn't obviously do it quickly and we didn't do it with a knee-jerk reaction. We took the time, as SROs, about four or five of us, to meet with counselors, teachers, curriculum directors, to figure out what is the best way to implement this. What we decided was, understanding the other 24 character traits, not all of them are going to be well-understood by all grade levels. For instance, the appreciation of excellence and beauty is not something a first grader's going to understand. They can certainly understand kindness, and they can understand courage. We also didn't want to overwhelm with too many at one time, so we thought, obviously, a first grader can understand courage and kindness, and that may be about all they need for the year, to get them on a train, to understand. But it also helps to start developing a relationship between the SROs and trying to understand why is there a police officer in my school? It starts to break down the uniform, break down the badge, to become a human being standing in front of these kids, and they're starting to see the care, they're starting to see the love and the attention they're getting, and a positive attention that's reinforcing behavior that they're getting in the classroom through the counselors. And oftentimes, or at least sometimes, maybe the only time they're getting that, that behavioral support, a positive behavior support. So, what we decided was for certain grade levels, we might do one a semester as they aged and got to the third grade, we might do two or three a semester until they get in the fourth grade, fifth grade, at that point where we thought, okay, maybe they can handle a little more. And as they get a little older, again, now the SROs are in front of them more, they've developed a relationship over a period of time. But as you know, with the city school system, some of them have sixth grade, and some of the kids can stay there. So, at that point, we thought to the sixth graders, now you've had all this leadership, you've had the training, now lead. And it put them in a position where they could start mentoring some of the younger students. It also put the younger students in a position to observe the older kids, living what they've been taught. You know, to properly lead, you do so by example. And so, to have a sixth-grade class set a culture in a school that this is the way we're going to serve, this is the way we're going to be, be in that position again and lead with your, with your character. I can tell you that the results we saw were, were pretty immediate, not only just from the relationship between the SROs and the school, the kids, but also in the kids themselves, interaction with each other, bullying took a sharp decrease. You saw a lot more kindness, opening doors. People were looking for a way to demonstrate what they were being taught. You had some small surprises where an SRO finds a bookmark about a month and a half at a library to give them, where a young lady had decorated a bookmark with nothing but the character traits that she had learned with some quotes from Travis and If Not Me Then Who stuck in a book that she had turned in, you know? So, you could see those things throughout. It also created a great vision of the things that we could do with this later through leadership days where, you know, you maybe could bring all the schools together in the 13th school district and have a day, fourth and fifth graders, where you, you show them, okay, great, you've been your own school. Now, what do you look like as a community? Where you can bring a group of fourth graders and fifth graders together to give them, you know, these, these challenges, leadership challenges or whatever they may be. But again, the impact was, was substantial. The neat thing about this was we, we weren't confined to what somebody from outside of our agency or outside of our school district was telling us that we had to teach, the words we had to say, in the age group we had to say them. What may be important for Las Cassas Elementary School may not be important or a, a need for Buchanan, you know? So, it allows the counselors, the principals to modify, if they will, not only lesson plans, but the timing of that lesson to be able to better serve their kids for the needs of the school or the needs of that community at that time. Again, because not everyone's going to be battling, every school's going to battle everything at the same time. I think the unique opportunity we have right now, if you see the list of schools, I think he included in there, and you see the United States Naval Academy, the Military Academy of West Point, those are the caliber of schools that use these. And there are hundreds of schools that use this program all over the country. Murfreesboro City Schools was the first school district in its entirety to use this program in every elementary school. What I think that puts us in a unique position as a county, having seen firsthand what it can do with students. If you can combine this with a, a school system where in a unique way, city school kids and, and students and our county city schools, they all end up in the same place. But they often come from maybe a different discipline background, they come from a different educational background, but these 24 traits can end up being the unifying principles that everyone in this county has had as they move forward to attend a middle school or a high school with Rutherford County schools. I don't know what it would look like as a program for a high school, a senior high school, a middle school, a high school. I can tell you what it looks like for a, an elementary school, and I can tell you how impactful it was, I believe how impactful it could be to a larger school system. And I think that it can, it can take its own value when it gets to the middle school and high school. I would leave that up to, to you guys and the Sheriff's Office and things like that, depending on what your vision is for this program within your system. It doesn't have to be what the city schools did. It doesn't have to mirror that. But I can testify to what, what we experienced while we were there, the impact it's had on our, on our youth that were at the city school system at that time. I know Zane Whitley is here, and he's a current SRO and can probably continue to speak on the impact he's still seeing with it today.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. So, I have a very similar but different backstory. I'm a, my, well, my father-in-law has a particular word he uses in front of the word Yankee, but I moved down here in 2014 to Illinois. Some of you know what that front word is. All right. I married my wife. I came down here, I knew nothing about Murfreesboro. It was a dot on the map where I knew my fiance was at, right? I jumped into law enforcement feet first, and after meeting, I'm going to get a little emotional, I apologize, because this man right here is the reason why I'm here tonight, all right? When he made the jump from his position to SRO, I went, "Why did you do that? You were at such a high level. You had such a high skill set." He goes, "I want to make an impact. I want to do better than what I'm doing right now as reactive, and I want to be on the front side and be proactive." And that stuck with me. So, when the position came open, supervisor at the time gently persuaded me to put in for the position, and I came on board and I jumped in feet first with Travis Mannion. There's some things about the organization and the support that they give I want to explain to you guys. I hadn't been on the TMF team for more than about six months. The regional coordinator, Jason Dodge, reached out and he said, "Hey, man, I hear you're doing good work." I said, "I've been doing it for six months. What are you talking about?" And he said, "People are talking. You've been doing good work. Coming to Atlanta on a random Wednesday in the middle of the week, I want you to do a service project in the morning, and then there's something in the afternoon we're going to do as a special event." My wife and my, not my oldest, but my boy at the time, went down to Atlanta. We loaded up meals for Meals for Wheels, all right? So, we're giving back to the community. That afternoon, it had been planned. We got to go to the Atlanta Aquarium, and I got to swim with the whale sharks, all right? Y'all, I don't swim, all right? Especially not with sharks, okay? But my point being is that they pushed me out of my comfort zone, something I never had ever thought about doing, but it was an hour they gave back to me that I could reclaim through some solace in watching these large gentle animals swim under my feet. That's just something small that they do as payback to veterans and first responders through these outreach programs, okay? Those are the type of individuals that are leading this organization, right? So, I'll backtrack to TMF. I did some quick math as Mr. Maples was speaking, and we've had, it was 700 and some student contacts so far just this year in student outreach programs and mentorships and meetings. If you use about 18 students per average in our classrooms, okay? Some of those aren't logged that we've done so far this year. But when we talk about scalability in our lesson plans, a universal way I'd love to do is the idea of kindness, right? Kindness transcends what street you live on, what color of shoes you have on, who your mom and dad are, how much money they bring home. Are they both in the house, right? What kind of car do you have? Do you have to walk to school? It doesn't matter because kindness is universal. Simplest, holding a door open for someone, smiling, saying hello, recognizing, hey, those are nice shoes. When I teach it, I'm going to have, this is going to be a little interaction, right? When I'm scaling it, especially for my younger kids, I have them make a fist and hold it up in the air, all right? As high as they can, you know? I say, "Okay," and I walk around, then I compare my fist to theirs without telling them why. And they're like, "Man, you've got such a big hand." Well, thank you, yes, all right? And I explain to them that even though my hand's bigger than theirs, they can still have more love in their heart than I do at my age, all right? That's a very simple concept we can teach to the little guys, because that's always the biggest concern is how are we going to scale this to our little peoples? The older kids are going to be much more adept to understanding the ideas of perseverance, okay? There's something that Joe Greco has in his abilities, it's called a Beaver Fit Trailer. It's an outreach. It's basically, it's a mobile CrossFit gym, about 14-foot-long, big old box trailer. It's beautiful, all right? But it's a mobile CrossFit gym, and we can handle up to 20 to 25 people at a time going through these events to do physical calisthenics, mild or moderate or, you know, pretty heavily engaged. And then, at the end, we'll talk about teamwork and perseverance. He brought it by the school, and on a whim, we set it up with some medicine balls, and we had them do some calisthenics and relay races as a team, right? Just looking at it, talked about perseverance, teamwork, talking, communicating, right? The idea that TMF is locked in to a curriculum, they give you a guideline, okay? When they send you the PowerPoints, right? Everything's online through the TMF Training Center. There's one or two slides that are typically locked in, and you can't really alter a whole lot, but everything else you can scale, you can change. So, we're talking about demographics, right? We're up in Smyrna West, Daniel McKee, right? You can scale those lesson plans to your, to the students you're dealing with. And the really good part about it was is I'm seeing in the schools that I'm functioning at... And the really good part about it was is I'm seeing in the schools that I'm functioning at, it's not just students, it's teachers and staff. I have teachers and staff. I was gone for a couple of days last week and one of them called and said, hey, is your signup genius program running? I haven't looked at it for a couple of days. Why? Well, the teachers are calling up here and asking about it and I want to try and get in on it also. So even the staff are starting to respond to it. And it's been really amazing to hear that and see that on the backside through those small little 20-minute sessions, 30-minute sessions that we can get in and get out in the middle of the school day. Thank you, guys.
So I think, thank you guys for, for that. I'll just end it here with saying essentially mentors, right? Current SRO, former SRO, these are the type of people that should be in front of our youth and teaching these things and talking like this. Not talking to students, talking with students. Right? Great opportunity, big opportunity. I'll end now and I'll leave it for questions, whatever it is you guys want to do, but thank you for the time.
I'd just like to thank you, Joe, for being here. We've had several meetings. So just to give the school board kind of an idea of what we are looking at. So Murfreesboro City Schools uses theirs as a partnership with their SROs. That's not necessarily what we're proposing. But before we went down that road, we wanted to see, is this an appetite that we would be interested in doing? Because it is curriculum, so the board does need to, to look at that type of thing. But I'd be remiss if I also didn't just bring up that what we're all trying to do is help our students. We sometimes can get stuck in the political nature of SEL, character education, regardless of all that, but that's not what we're trying to do. If you look at these 24 character traits that they talk about, humility, prudent, self-regulation, sure, anybody could go off the tangent in anything you do and take it in a direction they, they want to. I think all of us are looking for ways to help students and help people move forward and get past some of that areas that we've been in. And whether or not it was SROs, school counselors, or teachers, or whoever's teaching that, people in the education system, you hear it all the time, got into it to make a difference. And we don't want to be just robots teaching curriculum all day long. We want to make an impact. And so this is one of those ways to start looking at, whether the Travis Mannion Foundation is what we look at or not, this is what we're looking forward to do something with that.
What I like is what you've said is having role models that these kids can look up to. I've been at schools where, well, I've been several schools across the city, but there's been particular schools where there's a need for role models and, and that will make a long impact. So the mentorship that you keep bringing and, and saying, it's, it's, it's needed in these kids' lives very much, and I've seen it a lot. So, and I appreciate the scalability of being able to fit wherever the, the school that you're at, because different schools have different needs. So that's very important to, to consider. So thank you so much for presenting.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say thank you so much as a former middle school teacher.
Yeah. As a former middle school teacher, we went through a program called Quest many years ago. Was anybody familiar with that? And it was the same kind of thing where we were trying to impress upon our students kindness and how to get along with people and, and, and just how to make good decisions about situations. And I've always been sad that we didn't have anything that ever took that place. So this is very interesting to me.
I want to thank you for coming and presenting. It was wonderful. It was fabulous. And I, from the moment that I was able to hear about this, I just felt like this was a good fit for our schools. As a wife of a veteran and someone who did not have, he did not, my husband did not have a father in his home. And it was by the grace of God that he had scout leaders and football coaches that were instrumental in his life and led him down the right path and he was to be a successful human being. But all of our kids don't have that. And I just, this is a wonderful, wonderful program and I appreciate so much you coming and speaking to us all about it.
Dr. Sullivan, do you have ideas, I guess, on better what this looks like? What your thoughts are as far as implementation or?
Yeah, so a couple. One, I mentioned kind of the sheriff's department. We would never want to implement anything because the sheriff's department, ultimately, that's their employees. But before we even had that, we had an initial conversation with members of the sheriff's department. But out of respect for them, they adopt their curriculum as well. And so they get hit by multiple companies to adopt curriculum and they are very cautious and careful. So even if that wasn't an avenue that the sheriff's department wanted to go down with us, I still feel like from a school district, this could be something that we could look at from a perspective of how do we work on some of these character traits? Not in a controversial way, but truly a way to be able to make sure that these are all traits that we want people to be having in our schools and have communication with. So whether that involves administrators at the elementary level doing their morning meetings with their students kind of through that way or in their school council rotations, it just kind of depends on where we take the different partnerships.
Have, have we even talked to the sheriff's department about this yet?
Yes, initially. So they've
It's being thought of.
Being thought of and discussed. And we'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much for presenting.
Can we talk about the cost, the budget aspect of it?
There is no cost.
Exactly. There is no cost to this. So I, that needed, wanted to bring that up, that even if there's the sheriff looking for programs from salespeople, this one is not a cost to us. It's not something that we need to look into the budget for, so.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. I know our teachers need some extra support in the school system and it's always good when you have children. My son was, was a single mother and so there's a, half of the demographics are single in our country. So there's always a need for that, for, for someone who's not inside the family, that's not their mother, rat, rat, rat on them. And, you know, someone other than that, helping in our school systems and helping our teachers. So thank you so much for presenting tonight.
We started the 9/11 heroes run here in Murfreesboro. We had a lot of signups and it happened in a hurry and it caught the attention of, of Ryan Mannion at the Travis Mannion Foundation. She sent her chief program officer and the curriculum director to the area to watch the race, but also more to engage the schools. Because they saw how many kids we were rolling through this program, the impact it was having, the feedback they were actually getting from parents, and they wanted to understand better. When they came to visit, it was really amazing to watch. One that came was Janay Nash. At the time, she was the chief program officer. She left us to absolutely forward at the Murfreesboro Community to the, in the county of Rutherford where she was, her last visit here for last year's race, she was actually meeting with a realtor to move where she was from to actually come join the community. I say that because Andrea Dame was the curriculum director and she knew that we wanted to maybe look at some things, modify some things. We also knew that we had a state mandated drug curriculum that had to be taught. She actually availed herself and, and had multiple meetings with SROs through Zoom, coming in town to make sure that the Travis Mannion Foundation was actually serving this community as well as possible. And I know, Dr. Sullivan, when they start talking curriculum, she'll be the one to talk to, very available, and they will do everything they can to make sure. She's one of, you know, with the Massachusetts Education, she's a T, a former teacher. So she knows what the teachers are dealing with in a classroom and knows how to take that curriculum, take those traits and, and apply them to those age groups as well. So I don't want to make sure you knew that those things were also available if needed to help you while you were walking through this process.
I do have one question. If we were to bring you guys on board, are you staffed? Are you ready to jump right in and put people in our 51 schools?
That's going to be up to, I think, the, Dr. Sullivan and, and your decision as a, as a school board. I think you can make it look like what you want it to look like. It doesn't have to look like what the city schools, city schools actually implemented SROs to, to do the teaching in the elementary schools, which I think is a viable thing for, for us, it was viable, for us to get into classrooms with the students. But ultimately, it will be staffed however you would like to staff it, whether it be through mentors, teachers. It may make more sense for it to be a coach or a, a teacher in a high school, but that's going to, it's going to look like what you want it to look like. And that's how the Travis Mannion Foundation will support you is with your vision for this and your school and how it fits your school, they're going to support you for how that looks like.
So he doesn't have to be SROs. We can use whoever that is interested, because the training will be provided.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. So number 10 Springs Public Schools Empower Academy update. Dr. Bullard, I think we have Jared McLeod here as well, and I think we have several other. Dr. Bullard, you're going first.
Good evening, Board. I just have a couple of quick updates for you guys before I let Springs kind of take over and introduce some folks. First, as you know, they've decided to exercise their right to delay a year. So that will be reflected in their contract and their performance framework, which you did sign at our last, last month's meeting. That's not something you guys have to sign again. It's just for your information. I also wanted to point you to a new section of our website under academics where you can find information about our approved charter schools. So everything that was presented to you in last month's meeting, as well as the application for American Classical Education, which is currently active. So you are welcome to go there and then of course to reach out to me if any questions. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Springs team.
Thank you very much and thank you for having me. That presentation, by the way, was fantastic. If you guys adopted and were a part of it, I'm jumping in. And it's free too, so thank you. I appreciate that. And I love the shirts, by the way, too. Just, I think it's just so prideful and just love the board. But thank you guys so much for this opportunity tonight. When Caitlin and I were talking, we just want to make sure that we, we've committed to being a part of the district and we've committed to wanting to be a part of providing regular updates, being accessible is what we said, and we just want to make sure we're following up on that promise. And so here tonight, we brought our team who's here. There's a lot of things going on. So before I kind of get into all the updates from our side of the house, I just want to do some quick introductions. This is Phil Hermsmeyer. He's working on our facilities team, working with the city planners and really helping us get our brand new school off the ground. So thank you, Phil. We have Jen Behr, she's Pam. She is one of our board members and so she is here tonight. And also another board member, Josh Hayden, who's here. So definitely well supported by our board. In the back, we have Rich, Rich Harmon. He's from HJ Sims. We are looking to take in a big bond to finance the buying and building of a school. So appreciate the support over there as well. And Erin Bowman, she was a teacher for us, or a support staff for us over in our Springs schools in California. And she's moved out here many, many years ago and is a part of the community. And we're looking to get her back into the Springs family by hiring her here locally for what we're doing here. So we're really excited to have Erin. So thank you all for being here. If there's any questions you have later on too, for any of the team members, whether it's the facilities or financing or whatever, we're, we're more than ready to take any questions you might have. But I just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we've come since we've gotten approved last July. We've been just working really carefully with Caitlin. You know, I just can't say enough about your staff. Like we've said it from the whole process and I hope American Classical feels the same way, but the communication was great and everything has been fantastic. We've worked out the charter contract. We've been invited to the school choice event and that event was fantastic. It blew me away. I know Dr. Sullivan was there and there's tons of families just checking out all the great options and just to be considered and included as part of the family. It was, it was more than we could have ever appreciated. So thank you so much for that. Where we are right now, though, as Dr. Bullard said, we've delayed one year. So looking around, you know, the areas that we've committed to being in Laverne or Smyrna, we really couldn't find that, that school that really stood out to us that like, yes, this would be it. And, and we spent many, many months and Phil, thank you for your, your patience with me as I scoured the land. But we, we just wanted to make sure that we were building something that was right for the community and would, would, you know, fill up, because that's our partnership. We want to help alleviate some of that congestion that you have as well. So building a school that wouldn't take any students or have no one enroll was not going to be what we wanted to do for you as well. So where we've settled is that we are going to build a school. We're going to build a school from the ground up. We are going to bring it to our board this Thursday. I know you're having your own meeting, but we're going to do our meeting on Thursday. And if the board approves the agreement that we have in place, we will be moving in and trying to do some due diligence on about 10 acres in Smyrna. So we're really excited about that. Again, we're, it's kind of the same process. I've been following your board meetings as much as I can. You're doing due diligence as well. So we're kind of all on the same thing right now. So we'll see what's underneath the ground and Phil is helping us out with that. So we're really excited to be hopefully moving in the right direction. We've been assured it's about a 17-month process. So we want to get started as soon as possible to, to make that next August deadline. But then of course, as soon as we can announce the location and start talking to the families, getting in the communities, knocking on doors, letting the parents know about this choice, that's going to be our next biggest push. And so for right now, here tonight, just being accessible to you, giving you those updates, and then from there, we're going to hit the ground running, hopefully break some ground, hopefully real soon. So we couldn't be more thrilled where we are. We know there's a lot of hard work ahead of us, but, but we're, we're just appreciative as a team. So thank you for the opportunity to give you an update tonight. And then myself and the team are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Well, we're looking forward to when you get the school up and running. I know it's been a long time coming, so. Crossing fingers.
Any questions? Are you at liberty to say where in Smyrna?
So I think once the board enters into escrow, I will publicly, but I'll just let the board make that final decision. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. You haven't moved your family here yet, though, right?
Yeah. I'm wondering where my commute's going to be from, so.
I knew you had thought about it and then I thought, I bet he's decided not to do that.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, they're in school right now. I want them to finish out the school year. They're the first grade little boys, so yeah.
Oh, yeah. Don't move him right now.
No, not yet. But very soon, so hopefully in the summertime, so.
Oh, okay. So you do plan to try to be here.
I want to be the one knocking on the doors. I don't want to hire someone to knock on the doors. It's got to be me. Like, I, I'm proud of that.
So you'll be around and be at board meetings and things if we have questions. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
You got it. Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan, would you like to touch on the shirts since Mr. McLeod was talking about our?
Yes, so I'm working still on shirts for everyone, Brian.
These shirts.
Yes, so our schools, so our, each one of our schools is part of School Board Appreciation Week back in January, provided. I can't even tell you how many gifts to our school board members in appreciation. So each one of them is representing something different as we kind of move forward. So appreciate all that and it looks great to have you guys wearing those. So very awesome.
We're just trying to show our pride and show the shirts that we, we've got probably about 10 t-shirts. So look forward to some more. Yeah, we'll be wearing more. Number 11.
All right, number 11, Human Resources Tab 2, Elementary Cafeteria Monitor's. The cafeteria monitor duties and responsibilities include assisting in maintaining safe mealtime standards by monitoring assisting students, assigning seats, resolving problems, directing students into orderly lines and proper disposal of trays and organizing classes for dismissal. These positions were previously funded from the Centralized Cafeteria Fund 143 and will continue to be funded in the same manner. These positions are only allocated to RCS elementary schools. Their job description is included. I mentioned this last board meeting, we just got extra funding as far as USDA grant. We took away the cafeteria monitor positions during COVID because we were having such a hard time filling cafeterias. But if there's anything I've heard, elementary school principals, even being in the instruction department the last three years, was we need our cafeteria monitors back because we don't have anybody to help our students. And so glad we're able to work through this.
Is this going to be immediate?
Yes, once we can get them posted and moved all the way through. So this is not till next year. This is so us to go ahead and move forward before this year is over.
Okay, so this is for fall?
No, this is go ahead and do now.
Oh, okay. That's what I meant. As soon as we can get positions filled, they're going to go into the cafeterias.
Yes, that is a great promise. Soon as we can get positions filled, they are part-time positions.
Any questions? Number 12.
All right, number 12, Curriculum Instruction, Tab 3. So you have this as the tab for Tab 3 and I'm bringing up just to kind of point out a couple of them as well. So Rutherford County Schools will have nine high schools using Murphy Center on the Middle Tennessee State University campus to conduct their graduation ceremonies for the upcoming class of 2023. The nine high schools include Rockvale, Smyrna, Blackman, Laverne, Riverdale, Stewart's Creek, Oakland, Segal, and Central Magnet. A proposed agreement between RCS and MTSU is attached. Payment is due no later than 30 days after the billing date. So a couple just quick details. One, right now, these are on our high schools to pay for. And so that's something we've kind of talked about as a board. Schools are allocated money based on BEP that we may want to look at in the future of if we are sending down funds to be used for these type of things, maybe we need to hold back some of those funds and kind of meet in the middle. But right now, I don't feel necessarily comfortable with asking all of our high schools every year. Let's just take one of the, I'm just going to go down a couple of the charges on Tab 3. So facility use, $750. Then you look at for each chair they put out is $450. For every one of our high schools, they do a practice and a ceremony. So they are being charged twice because they have a practice. practice and a ceremony. So they are being charged twice because they have a practice, then another school comes in and practices, and then they set it back up. And so, an average school, you're looking at somewhere between $12,000 and $20,000 to do a high school graduation. Yes, high schools do financially pretty well with some of the funds that we allocate based to them instructionally, but I'm hoping that we can start looking at some ways that we can take care of some of this cost for schools as well. Go ahead.
Are there any other options in town?
Not that seat anywhere near that many.
Not currently.
Yes.
There's some coming.
Yep. And so there's a couple other things they add in there. So they do a stage of floor cover, $170 a school, any tables we have, $6 a table, and it is, we're blessed to have that facility there, but we're definitely charged as a normal entity like anyone else. And so it is a, that's a large amount of money, but it is a large facility to have to use.
And we're part of the community.
We are.
So those MBA or anything basketball related or something like that, that's not part of the community that comes in, we get charged the same amount as they do. We really don't get any discounts.
Now, and I'll also say the schedule is something we always have to work on. So we work with Dr. Martin Secondary Schools Coordinator. These schedules are set around MTSU's graduation and any other obligations they have, and we work to find a big eight or nine-day window. I don't love that we have three in a day on a Saturday, for example, but that's the only way for us to be able to use their facility for that amount of time, so.
I know this is going to sound interesting, but it may not be thought of because of the weather, but have we ever host, held any graduations on the high school, on the football fields?
We did, and we have to limit the number of seats.
And we did what?
We have to limit the number of seats because our high school graduations are so big. So we have two things. One, it gives us a little bit more control, but it does require us to limit the number of seats per graduate, because our high school facilities aren't going to cover as many because of how big our high school graduation classes are. Two, we always have that weather possibility that we don't worry about from Murphy Center.
But the convenience of MTSU's is covered, and you have unlimited amount of seats that you don't have to worry about, so.
But I will say, we are getting to the point, even with MTSU, that some of our high school graduations fill up just about every space, that even limiting that, that's more than you would have at a high school football field, that's even been part of the discussion with MTSU.
Okay.
What is the attendance on that, like on the high side? You would need space for it, oh, yeah.
Full, full.
MTSU probably has, what, 10,000?
More than that, I'd have to go look.
20,000 seats?
Probably not 20,000.
Under?
But it's.
15?
It's between 10 and 20, and you have to, the ones behind you will have some, but it's, it's full.
Do we do tickets yet, like MTSU?
We haven't yet, but it's, it's in discussion. Yep, it's in discussion. You have to think as our graduating classes start to hit 600 at our schools.
Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Murphy Center, 11,520.
Perfect, true. Yep.
Thank goodness we were not playing a game, we will have lost.
The other portion I would bring up, so it was mentioned by Mr. Young a couple board meetings ago, but something I've asked all superintendents across the state to look at. The other thing that has a big fee is some of our schools. We have a lot of schools that win state championships, and a lot of individuals and teams that win state championships. So that is somewhat ironic when you look at it from an instruction standpoint, that we are then asking people that win, who've had to pay money to be a part of the team, now you have to pay for your ring as well. I'm not sure that we have the financial capability to do that right now. I'm not saying I'm against that, there are just some things as a board, if that's an avenue we want to go, we need to investigate, we would need to look at, do we do that for just state champions? Do we do that for state champions and individuals? Do we include all TWSAA-sponsored events, or do we include, then you get into the conversation around dance and cheer? There's just some things we need to have conversations around, that I'm definitely for providing that opportunity, because I do feel like that's something that we probably need to do, but I'm not sure where I could pull it from right now. Brian and I have talked some about that, but we're looking at that to see.
I just want to make sure as we look at this, and you've mentioned, mentioned it, we have several high school cheerleading teams that are number one in the nation. We have middle school teams that are number one in the nation. And whatever we look at to do, we have to make sure we do it for everybody, because they have big old expensive jackets they have to buy, and, you know. I'm not against being able to help our children with these kinds of things. We're very lucky that we're sitting here as a level five district with this kind of athletics. We are an extremely fortunate district, but we just have to be really careful that we make sure that we're equitable across the board.
My initial thought wasn't just kind of talking today, was looking at, could, I know the City Schools has a foundation that funds a lot of their extra things. We probably are well past having our own foundation, but I don't even know how to go about starting that, that would be able to take care of some of our extracurricular activities when we have those different types of things. So if that's something you're interested in looking at, I'm more than happy to do that, but I know that hurts us to where we don't have a community resource to go, go take care of. Can you take care of these for us?
I was going to say, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire board, but I think all of us would love to be able to do that. I echo your sentiments that where we're at financially, I'm not sure that it's a feasible or necessarily responsible thing to do, just given where we're at with our buildings, deferred maintenance, needing to build new schools, things of that nature. And my other concern would be, when we open this door, it doesn't stop at athletics. We have people in the arts who are competing for thespian competitions, things of that nature. We have people in orchestra and in band that are coming home with significant awards. Somebody at Holloway competed in a national Microsoft competition. My concern would be if we open this door, making sure that we have the funds to provide the same thing across the board to anyone that's winning at a particular level, not just our athletes.
I appreciate Mr. Young bringing it up, because it's been something our people have been doing and having to take care of, and it didn't really hit me until I was having a conversation, and we're looking at some of our fundraiser requests, and the number of fundraisers that have to go in to pay for parents already doing what the kids have done. So I don't know how we do it. I initially think the foundation is the way to go.
I think we're long overdue. I know just this years ago, when my kids were at Black Fox, I said, why do they have a City Schools Foundation? And they do, they would do fashion shows, they do all this stuff to put money in the coffers, and we have nothing at the county level. So I think this is something we should look into.
We, we have a great relationship with Murfreesboro City. Thanks to Dr. Sullivan and being as good as he's been to bring in Trey Duke, and the two of them talk a lot. Murfreesboro City would be glad to help us and tell us how they got this started. They're not going to do it for us, but they would tell us how they got it started, and I think it's something we need to look into.
They included their community members that are spearheading this, and so if we can include our community, which I'm always about bringing our community together, this is a great way to get everyone involved, so.
So one of the things that I looked at coming in as chair was the foundation, that we could get the group, the private business group, our private business group, off the ground faster. So it's been looked at.
Potential, okay.
I think we, I think we do need to look at it. Okay, number...
13, yep, I think, yes. 13, Legal, Tab 4, Attica County Transfer Student. The Board's been requested to admit a transfer student from another high school, or from another school system under discipline. The student was expelled for possession of a handgun on school property, robbery, and reckless endangerment. According to Policy 6.318, the Board may deny admission of any student except those in state custody when a student transfers from another school system. You'll see my recommendation is to deny. You have the confidential folder in front of you with the information in it.
And as always, you can call Ms. Ridley and ask questions if we now on Thursday.
Number 2, we have policy adoption, first reading of two readings, so the policies below are recommended on the first reading. These policies will be brought to the next scheduled board meeting for a second and final reading. So policy changes, you have Policy 1.106, the Code of Ethics, adds language requiring board members to publicly disclose any personal interest in real estate matters involving the Board. B, Policy 2.200, Annual Operating Budget, changes the date the proposed budget must be submitted to the County Commission, change it to May 15th to follow the Private Act. C, Policy 3.204, Pandemic Epidemic Emergency Cleaning, proposal to sunset that policy, along with 3.2041, Pandemic Epidemic Face-Covering Mask Requirement, proposal to sunset that policy. That is not being implemented in case everybody, anybody's watching and hears that. We're asking to sunset that one, since it's still on the books. 3.208, Facilities Planning, changes the timeline to present annual assessment facility needs to the Board, moves it from December to February to go along with our budget process. 3.211, Energy Use and Conservation, Updates Language Regarding Energy Use, Student Insurance Program, proposal to sunset that one. Policy 4.603, Promotion and Retention, Updates Language for the Current Third-Grade Retention to Comply with State Law, that'll probably be one that we are changing again. Policy 4.604, Credit for Prior Purposes, Updates Language to Comply with State Requirements. Policy 4.605, Grad Requirements, Updates of Credits Required to Graduate Early in Compliance with State Law. Policy 5.109, Evaluation, Adds Language Regarding the Director of Schools to Establish Procedures for Local Grievance to Process to Align with State Law. Policy 6.300, Code of Conduct, Removes THC from Zero Tolerance Offenses and Compliance with State Law. Zero Tolerance Offenses, 6.309, Removes THC from Zero Tolerance Offenses and Compliance with State Law. Policy 6.319, Alternative Education, Updates Languages Regarding Exceptions for Assignments to Alternative School. Then we get into Policy 6.413, Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Roe Concussions, Removes PAs from List of Healthcare Providers Authorized to Give Written Clearance to Return to Athletic After Concussion, Assigned with TWSAA Policy. And then we have one new policy, 6.604, Name, Image, and Likeness, New Policy to Address Agreements for Student-Athletes for Use of Their Name, Image, and Likeness. Again, that'll be the first reading.
Number 14.
All right, number 14, Board, I believe is one we've had individual conversations quite a bit about. So going back to looking, just to do just a little bit of background information, we started looking at custodial and EA pay in July, even with the previous board, to see what can we do about salary for those two positions, because we had so many under, or unfilled positions. We looked at ESER, that is when our new board kind of came in line. ESER wasn't an allowable procedure for us to make a move to change the actual salary schedule. At the time of October, we looked at the number of openings. School Nutrition only had four or five openings at that point, to where we had 50 or 60 in custodial, and just as many, if not more, in our educational assistance at our school level. This bonus was originally supposed to go through that, to reflect kind of those open positions. School Nutrition did get a bump in their salary schedule in January of 2022. They were the only group that moved from step one to step two. All of that to say, we do have the funds to go ahead and approve our hourly classified staff, that are School Nutrition, to provide them with the same bonus that our hourly classified EAs and custodians and everyone else received. Without getting too nuanced, all of those people who were included the first time were 141 general purpose and 142 federal. 143 is usually how we have to pay for cafeteria staff, just like with the budget, or the new positions we have for cafeteria monitors. If we were to move that out of 143, you're looking at probably another six weeks or longer. We would have to approve an amendment through USDA, the Board would have to approve it, it'd have to go through Health and Ed, Budget, County Commission before we could start on it. We have the funds in ESER, because that is the way that it was originally kind of looked at budget-wise, and so we can go ahead and do that and start tomorrow, since the Board technically, in your motion from February 15th, the way that I wrote it, was that all classified staff. All that to say, you don't actually have to vote on this, because you already voted on it December 15th. So, I appreciate a board member bringing that to my attention. That was a lot of information to say that we're going to go ahead and start processing this, and I appreciate all your patience.
You're welcome.
I know there will be a lot of happy lunch workers.
I hear the clapping from here.
Yes, and that does not include our salary with nutrition managers, so our, apologize to our judges, these are just our classified school nutrition staff that are hourly. And that does bring up the discussion, as we look into our salary schedule, I should have a file tomorrow, the initial file, I'm hoping tomorrow, about our salary study work. There is going to become, and this probably is that right time, to start looking at some parts of our salary are better, or of our salary schedule are in better shape than others. EAs are a perfect example. We know that EAs are an area that we have to work on to differentiate between regular education EA, special education EA, EAs with degrees, EAs with a bachelor's compared to an associate's, all those different types of things. We are going to have to get past the point of everybody gets this exact same portion of a raise, because some people may get a different step increase based on what the salary schedule looks like. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that is what we're kind of looking at. Number 15, Facilities and Construction, so some good news. Request for Smyrna High Annex Bid on Thursday, March 9th, 2023. Purchasing Engineering and Construction, receive bids for the site work and construction of the annex for Smyrna High. All bids have been reviewed and Engineering and Construction recommends RG Anderson's base bid, plus alternate number one for a total bid of $30,120,000. Engineering requests to also include the existing building's 282,000 square footage of roof recover system with minimal additional insulation, a high-density coverboard, and a new membrane above the existing roof system at a cost of $3.5 million. Engineering and Construction recommends a motion to approve the request and move forward to Health and Ed for funding in the amounts of $38,420,000. You'll see the RG Anderson Construction's $30,120,000, construction-related contracts a million, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, $1.8 million, design $2 million, existing roof is $3.5 for that total of $38.42 million. So that did come in a little bit under, so we were looking originally 41 roughly, Trey. And that was, this allows us to take care of some things, something that kind of the Board has asked us to look at, is when we are doing projects, if we have other projects that we know we need to take over in the building, at the same point, why can't we go ahead and build those things in? And so this allows us to kind of look at that. Riverdale's went out last Thursday, is that correct?
Friday.
Friday, so we should have that bid a week from this Friday.
Week from Thursday.
Thursday, then we will follow with Oakland right after that. There is the possibility that we have to have a special called that March 17th or 18th, 16th, 17th, I'll look at that exact date, depending on what those bids do, because we're trying to hit Health and Ed session, and they may move Health and Ed up a week to try to get us moving. But as we know more about the bids, I'll have more information on that. But happy to answer any questions. I will say there were a lot more bids for lawn cutting than there were for building schools. I think we only had two, correct?
Yes.
We only had two companies bid to build an annex.
And what is the timeframe we're looking at? We've got this bid, we're waiting on Riverdale and then Oakland. How soon could Smyrna start, if everything?
Tomorrow.
Oh, good.
But we've got to still go through Health and Ed. They're not going to make a move till they get Oakland or Riverdale. I brought this to you all tonight because there's a lot of chatter out there about these numbers and what they mean and what they look like. Everybody's wanting to hear the first one, it's kind of an indicator. It is a good indicator. I'm hoping that the next two are so in kind, and that we can take all three of them to the County Commission. And once they have acted at Health and Ed, then it goes to Budget, and then it goes to the full commission. Once the full commission has acted, then I can write contracts, but not until.
Do you anticipate, another question I keep getting asked, could we, if everything goes smoothly, and the bids get accepted, and we get the funds, could we start all three of these same time? Or could we have them going simultaneously?
They will all be going simultaneously. Smyrna would be the first to start, because I'm not going through a city permitting process. The permitting process at the city will probably delay Oakland or Riverdale a little bit.
How far?
Don't know yet. Depends on them.
Depends on the conversation.
We've had a couple of good meetings with them, I will.
Agree.
Say that recently, but we're still going through their process that we don't go through anywhere else.
Best-case scenario, we could still start sometime this summer prior to school?
Oh, well, all three of them, I would think, no problem, start this summer.
Okay.
They better, or we're going to have a real hard time. We've got some things that we need to do at Oakland or Riverdale this summer with utilities, that if we don't get going, it may delay the whole project.
So I have a question. So being the indicator for this one, being $30 million, is it a possibility for the other two coming around the same amount? Like, no?
No, they're drastically different projects. What I'm basing that on is it came in under my budget.
Oh, okay.
I'm hoping the next two come in under my budget as well.
And, okay, and that was 38 million. Your budget was 38 million, and the bid was at 30 million?
No, what we had was 41, so where you're seeing their bid of 30.1 million, that doesn't include like the design fees, the furniture equipment, doesn't include any of that.
Oh, okay.
And this was truly the 30.
Just the construction piece. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you for the very fine.
Yeah, the construction piece for Smyrna was 37 million, and it came in at 30.
Okay, but the total budget that includes everything is 41 million?
The budget was 41,550.
550.
And we're requesting 30... And we're requesting thirty eight, four twenty to go forward.
Okay.
And what is, since these are all secondary schools, we don't have any of the sharing that goes on with the city schools.
Right, yeah, I understood that. Mm-hmm.
I'm just glad it came in under fifty. I think everybody was.
I am too. Holding a praying.
Yeah.
Keeping my fingers crossed on the other two.
All right, so next we have Oakland and Riverdale addition project updates, all that, Trey, we had Trey's had one meeting and then we had another meeting with the city today to kind of talk about some things. Anything else you want to add to that?
I think I kind of gave it.
Perfect. And then number three is the CMTA ESPC update. Is that meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow at three.
So we're meeting with Michael Smith, with the county as well. So to just kind of formally look at, we have four options we've talked about. Do we want to ask the county commission for funding? Do we want to go to the bond market ourselves, which was kind of again asking the county commission for funding? Those two options are going to be out, but we need to have that formal conversation with him so that he can, and Brian and our team can kind of go from there.
And when do we think we're going to get those estimations brought to us to look at? For the scenarios that you guys were really wanting us to digest?
We've already got, it'll be the same slide deck you've already seen, once brought, once Michael tells us which way he wants us to go, then we'll.
Oh, okay.
Then we will be able to just nail down the numbers. But it's basically the same slide deck, we'll just change a few numbers here and there, and then we'll be able to provide the contract.
Yeah, we're going to look at the fifteen year with the government.
Yeah.
Subsidies, not the right word, but the payback, yeah.
Yeah.
Reben?
Yes.
After the, after the meeting tomorrow, will you have a better idea, obviously?
Yes.
That you could tell us at the board?
Probably, yes. Yeah. I mean, we pretty much know that we're not going to be doing one and two, but we need to have that discussion as well.
We just need Michael to tell us which way the county would like to go. The, the, the numbers are, whether it's option three or option four are going to be fairly similar. It just depends on how they structure the contract and how they structure the loan and how it affects the county. It's not going to affect the rate that we're paying that much, and it's not going to change the numbers that much.
And I do want to point out that even he is our county finance director, he's not necessarily favorable of this idea.
No.
But we also have looked at, we don't really have any other options. And so just wanted to be completely transparent in that. I don't think any of us in a perfect world would love to do that because we're basically asking somebody else to take the burden on for us and they're going to say, they're going to make money off of it at the same time. But it's an option for us to take care of about fifty million dollar in projects.
Yeah.
So.
And this does come with warranty for the LED lights, so if there's something that's defective or it doesn't last as it's supposed to be, there's a warranty that we can replace them, so.
Yes.
How long, in the warranty, how long is that?
It depends on the manufacturer and the type of lights, but average fifteen to twenty years.
Oh, okay.
Number sixteen?
Yep, so other thing I want to hit on, one of our meetings we had today with the city was just to look at the appetite to see, and I kind of know what my suggestion is, so we've had conversations around the Beatty property. We're still in the conversation around sewer versus our own step system. I think Trey a couple of weeks ago gave you a letter that said the county or the city about will serve. And so as part of the city's process from three or four years ago, they require you to ask for annexation now. I am not comfortable going to the county commission and requesting annexation based on some other things that have happened. And so I wanted to see what the board's appetite was, you know, I'm at the will of the board, so if the board wants me to go do that, I will go do that. I don't envision there would be enough of an appetite at the county commission. You can just kind of look, there was a political issue with the Rockvale schools being annexed without anyone's permission. They weren't annexed, but it was just a city's kind of way to investigate some things, but it didn't go over well with the county commission. And they voted unanimously on the last Thursday's county commission meeting to say, no, we never requested that. So if we wanted sewer, even if the city were to deny us sewer as part of their process, now you have to ask for annexation. I would become uncomfortable asking for annexation in the turn of events that the city said, yes, you're now annexed. Not sure I want to press that lock. So happy to have any of those conversations outside of here with you. All right, sorry, number sixteen, financial reports. So we've got a couple of things from, we'll do this in two different sessions. So one, we will do our fund one seventy seven and fund one eighty nine tonight, and then I will give you an overview of kind of fund one forty one on Thursday. So I sent to the board a couple of weeks ago, all the principal requests. So now we are in the middle of our department requests. Brian, Kelly and I were together for almost five and a half hours today, seemed like a lot longer and so much shorter at the same time, guys. But it seemed, we got through four departments in that five and a half hours looking at every one of their requests, and we are truly going through each line. John, can you let me connect real quick? I'll show you kind of what we are looking at so you can have an idea. So you will see, we looked at this one at our last board meeting. We looked at that fund one forty one, seventy one, one hundred, and then I showed you where that lined up to the county's kind of whole big document. We are taking each one of these lines and seeing where are we as far as expenditures go? Is that something we need to increase or decrease first of all, and then what do the departments request? So there are some cleanups that in going through year one that we're having to do. I will just give you a good example, we did alternative schools today. Let me go to alternative ed instruction. And so we talked last time about this being only like two point something percent of our budget. We have requested an additional three teaching positions, we could probably need more than that, but we don't have the room to put them. So we've increased for three and then a full-time instructional coach so that we would be able to set up our own online portion of our virtual school. And so that's, or not a virtual school, of the alternative school that's connected to the virtual school. And so we went through to add that number to these to make it, and that's what we are working on. So this takes a very lengthy discussion, so we are trying to get it to our March eighth and ninth board retreat so that you'll have some ideas. Part of these numbers are going to change based on what the salary schedule says. The other portion that I want to show you just so what it looks like is, so here is kind of what the instruction department, and remember we have one side of the house is an instruction, another side of the house is operations, so instruction's what we do for students, and so that's where we're starting. But we are going through every one of these budget requests to kind of go through and figure, figure out where we can put them. Then we have staffing requests that are the same. You can see that some places have requested like thirteen positions, we didn't go through the budget, felt like we could do five. There were over two hundred and ninety positions that were requested, there's no way in the world that we could ever fund that. And so we're now going through and trying to pick out the great way of where can we fund, where can we not fund? And so just want you to see, and I'll show all this at the retreat as well, kind of where we are budgeting every single portion. So if you call and I don't answer, we were spending a ton of time together figuring out every nook and cranny of this. So that's all I wanted to show, but I know Trey's got a couple of things he wanted, that we wanted to hit on as far as, and I'm going to connect this with the director's update. So let's look at fund, do you want to look at one seventy seven first or one eighty nine? Which one do you want to do?
Uh, one seventy seven's fine. This, this came really from a request.
It did from.
County commission for us to present at health and ed and.
Yep.
Mark for someone said we need to show the board first, so what we're going to show them. So if you look at the first thing, and I can give you a quick update, fund one seventy seven should be the top sheet that you had, it's a five-page document, it says capital projects twenty-two dash twenty-three, fund one seventy seven, and it has a date of two fourteen, two thousand twenty-three. Does everybody got that?
Yeah.
So the first thing, and we're going to do a quick tutorial on how to read it and what we look at, and this is what Jeanette Egley, who works from Brian's department, she's my.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm so sorry. Can you put, I appreciate the handouts, they're great, but can we have them on the computer because they're so tiny?
You have them? No, they don't. I can send you.
And I, I don't want to be squinting my eye.
No problem.
Trying to find it, sorry.
Sure. So the first page and a half is, you'll see it's called carryover projects. These are twenty-one, twenty-two projects that were funded and were not completed on July first of this fiscal school year, so they're called carryovers. If you look at that on page two, we had four million twenty-six thousand eighty-nine dollars of projects from last year that we carried over. It shows that we have on the far right side, it says remaining, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That means all those projects are complete. So all of the money from last year, that four million dollars, all of it's complete. The two hundred thousand that we have, a hundred and fifty.
Wait, I'm confused because if you're saying that all of it is completed, four million, but you've got two hundred and ten thousand dollars left over.
I'm fixing to explain that.
Uh, okay. Sorry.
We have four million twenty-six thousand dollars is what was budgeted. There's two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-five left. A hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of that is the Smyrna High football field money, that's not ours. It got put into this account as a way to budget. Keep track of it. So that's not our money, it's Smyrna High's money, and they will gradually spend it.
And you'll see that on page one at the very bottom, turf for football fields.
Yes, turf for the football field. The balance of that is a few dollars from a few projects that they have not moved over to the completed column yet. All of these projects, if there's a money, a little bit of money left, it ends up going to the bottom line, to our ending fund balance. This is a live-in document, we do monthly updates. This was run in the middle of the month, so there's a couple of projects that they haven't moved the money over yet for the completed projects.
And let me, just a little bit of how this is funded. This is one, the only one, I guess, that is funded strictly out of property tax. So fund one seventy seven, they used to call it Bullen nickel, is that correct?
Dr. Bullen nickel.
Dr. Bullen nickel, so a nickel went to go towards capital projects, and so that nickel is now worth about seven point five million in our budget, so that would have been our normal one seventy seven fund, where we could tackle seven point five million of our two hundred dollars in deferred maintenance. This though, last year, we moved ten million from our general purpose to give us another ten million dollars. We moved pennies over from property tax so that we could try to attack about eighteen million. When you look at this overall budget, you see twenty-two because we had that four million carryover.
So I have a question. So that two hundred and, I'm so sorry, these, these numbers are so little for me, two hundred and.
Ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
If you take the one fifty-three out, you have about fifty-seven thousand, so that's really what's at the carry to the bottom line is fifty-seven thousand dollars because a hundred and fifty-three is not really ours.
And you'll see there.
So it's only fifty-seven.
Yeah, and you'll see above where those numbers are still. So like Riverdale High School, you'll see a twelve thousand one ninety-seven fifty. We still have ceiling grid and tiles replaced that we plan on using that money for.
And that's going to be in this fiscal year, that fifty-seven thousand?
It has.
Well, what you just said.
It has to be, or it.
It rolls.
Or it will not, it will not be carried over to the next budget.
That is correct. Below that is this year's projects. It's called twenty-two, twenty-three projects. They're in various states of completion. If it says encumbered, that means we have a purchase order out there. If it says total spent and encumbered, that's, they may have invoiced some, but that's the total encumbered to date of what is budgeted. Normally at this time of year, we're somewhere around fifty to sixty percent encumbered. We can't write the purchase orders for each one of these projects on July one.
I'm glad Trey mentioned that because that was something that was good for me to know today because as the board, it is, it's good for us to realize, like, we have our new money July one, how come we can't go and spend projects?
Right.
Since this fund is strictly from property tax, most property taxes aren't collected till December. And so it's taken us several years to build into that six to eight million dollars so we have enough cash flow and fund balance that July one, we can go ahead and start projects and not wait until property tax comes in December.
The, the first ten years that I've managed this fund, we would get some folks that would go pay their property tax in October, and we would get fifty thousand dollars of those funds, and they would automatically come over to our ledger. And the accounting department would call me and say, hey, we got fifty thousand dollars. If you've got a project for less than that, go ahead and write the PO. So we couldn't write anything really till like February because we've been able to take a few pennies here and there. And here's the other thing, when, when they give us this nickel, it's based on their anticipated revenue coming in. If the revenues are better, we still get the full nickel. You understand what I'm saying? So they may have said we're going to get a hundred dollars and we get a nickel. If they get a thousand dollars, we still get the difference between the original nickel and what the additional revenue is. So that money, because it was not allocated and budgeted by us in July, and we don't know it till February or March, it still comes to us and it went into what we would call a fund balance, it went to the bottom. So being good stewards, we've gradually built that money up over the last ten or twelve years to the point that we have somewhere between nine and ten million there. That allows us to start writing six or eight million dollars worth of purchase orders in July and not having to wait until February to start doing our work. So the money is there, we've built our own bank account so that we don't have to wait till February. We're not saying we've got this money, let's go spend it. Because if we do, then I'm back in the same boat, we can't do anything till February. So that's, that's how we've got to where we can get started. So basically what I want to say, if you look at the bottom line on the last page, very last page, budget after amendments is twenty-three million eight hundred and twenty-seven. How we get to that number is the carryover projects of four million dollars, and I'm using round numbers, I'm not being exact to the penny, four million dollars for the carryover, seven point eight million, which was our original Dr. Bullen's nickel, and then the ten million that we moved extra. That's how we get to the twenty-three million dollar budget. If you look over on the right side, we're at thirteen million, meaning remaining. So we're there in that typical forty to fifty percent of projects, so we're in our normal position. But I want you to go back and look at something real quick. If you look at the second page again, the HVAC projects, there's nine million dollars in HVAC projects. I'm fixing to write the two four million dollar ones complete. We're fixing to write the Laverne High complete. Just about all of that money's going to be gone in the next week or two. If you take eight million dollars out of this thirteen, I'm down to five that we haven't tackled yet. If you look at the next page, and I've highlighted these for you, miscellaneous, there's one point six million for portables. I wrote that PO yesterday. It's one point three million. So you knock that off, and I say all that to say this, if you take the big hitters where it's the big numbers that we've just about written, we're going to either have written or we're going to be writing them in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be down to about a million and a half dollars. That's all we haven't contracted for this year. And I say all that to say this, by the time we get to July one, all of this is going to be encumbered and it's all going to be gone, which is our goal every year, is to make it, to complete these projects and they go away. So that's kind of the short version of the one seventy seven, it's, it's about where I would expect it to be this time of year, and those are each and every one of those projects and each and every one of the numbers.
And I do appreciate, so what other districts are struggling with, like we are as well, we moved extra funds to be able to tackle some of that two hundred million in deferred maintenance, but there's not a workforce out there that can do some of that deferred maintenance because everybody's trying to do some of that. And so Trey and his team and finance have worked really hard to try to, if there's a contractor that can do it, we need to go ahead and take care of this because we'll have other projects that are going to take its place the next year.
And one, one thing, while we're talking about one seventy seven, there are a few projects that get added. We don't necessarily like to do it because it's very difficult to go to the county commission. We've added a project, y'all voted to for the emergency fire alarm system at Rocky Fork Elementary, I mean Rocky Fork Middle. There's a couple of those projects and we're able to take that money from fund balance now, which we weren't because we didn't have that bank account. So there are a few times that we would recommend that we use fund balance. All of these numbers are my estimates when we go through the budget process and we're a year later, by the time we're trying to get them under contract. So we have some that come in over and some that come in under. And we try and move that money, and I work closely with Jeanette, to move those monies and stay in funds. There are always a couple of things that come up throughout the year where we say, okay, if we have additional funds, we're going to target this. And we've had a couple of projects that have been on and off, the 177 for the last couple of years because we either, they were either way under budget or way over budget or we didn't have the money. One of those is a chairlift for Holloway High. We are back at the state with a revised plan because there's been some things, the Fire Marshal's office has changed a few things on us, so we're getting those drawings cleaned up. We're going to have it back out for bid. This will be the third year that we've put it out for bid. And we're going to be recommending any overages in any of these projects, that that money be set aside for this project so that we can go ahead and get it taken care of this year. We do have a five-year, and I'm getting way off in the wheeze, but we have a five-year ADA program with the county where the federal government tied some of our fuel tax dollars to TDOT to doing some ADA upgrades throughout the district. We work with the county on that, it's part of our 177 funds that you see where we've been requesting $150,000 a year, every year for that. That would take all of our money and we couldn't do a lot of the things that we've also been doing. So we're in year three. I don't want to go into year four looking at this same project and it's going to be above and beyond the normal ADA stuff. So we're going to try and knock that out. That's my project for this year that's been earmarked for, let's make it go away with any extra funds that we have. So you'll see that probably in about another month, coming back through on a budget amendment. I just wanted to throw it out there for you tonight so you know a little bit about it.
For the sake of time, we'll do fund 189 on Thursday. That'll, we'll connect 189 on Thursday. And the reason this has come before, you technically don't go to look for approval for these funds until April, but Health and Ed requested an update on these at our meeting next Tuesday. And I'd never want to give Health and Ed any information that I haven't given you yet because you guys are operating and so I need to make sure you have it before they do.
Thank you.
I do have a question on the John Coleman Annex HVAC.
Yep.
Yes, sir?
We're going to put that on hold until.
I'm sitting waiting for direction.
All right. It's on hold for right now.
We need to decide what we're going to do with that building before we spend $750,000.
Agree. Because it's really a $4 million project, we only have $750,000 of it.
That's phase one.
Yeah, we definitely want to put that on hold.
We have a meeting on Thursday at 1:00 and right now we're working on our voluntary plans that will expire at the end of this year. So we're working on the 2024 voluntary plans.
I don't have anything additional I have at Thursday because we had a lot of budget stuff.
Sure. We had a legislative, legal and legislative conference with TSBA last week. It was very informative. There is going to, we, there's going to be a, a big discussion by the legislators over the bills that have been sent for, to amend the third grade retention law. That'll be March 7th and that'll be with the House, with the, with the education committee for the House. Unfortunately, we're going to be having a work session that day, so, but.
Unfortunately.
Huh?
Unfortunately.
Well, it's not unfortunately, but I'm saying, conflict, there's a conflict and we just cannot be cloned and go to everywhere, so. Anyways, so yeah, but there would be a video of that, so I'm going to be really interested in to see how that really pans out. I'm planning to go to the Capitol next week, next Wednesday, if anyone would like to join me, I will welcome that. I'm also going to be sitting down with a few legislators, myself, to talk about the third grade retention, so that's my board update right now.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Any general discussion?
I have a question on the presentation we heard tonight from the Travis Mannion Foundation. My request would be to look at implementing that, that we make sure to incorporate it in our alternative schools maybe first.
Great point.
If there is a need for that, I think that is by far the greatest and maybe there has some long-term benefits.
Great point. I would say that's probably where we would pilot it and we would pilot it probably before the school went out, before we did a full implementation. Great point.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you. We will have an executive session following a five-minute restroom break in the doctor's conference room, Dr. Solis' conference room. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.